Okay, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. We have the pursuant to Virginia Code 2.23708.2 and the school board policy 139, school board participation in meetings by electronic communication. School board member Diane Ralston will participate in the meeting through electronic means due to a medical condition that prevents her in-person participation. A motion is in order for the approval of the closed session agenda. Ms. Dargapour.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
My second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote? Ms. Ralston, how do you vote? Yes? Ms. Ralston, can you hear us? By the way, I'm sorry, I didn't know. Jason, is Ms. Ralston...
Can you hear me?
Hey, Ms. Ralston, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we'll work on that.
All right, so we'll just call that abstain at this point.
Okay, so I'm waiting on Justin.
Take your time, Will.
So the vote is seven yes, one abstain, motion passed.
Moving on to the motion enter closed session, motions in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams. On Ms. Ralston, we can hear you now.
Okay, good, I vote yes.
Okay, you vote yes. Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Outstanding. All right, moving on to the motion enter closed session.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, that the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with the superintendent and staff the hiring, appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific employees and to receive legal advice on related legal issues as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 and 8. Two, to discuss with staff and consult with legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemptions pertaining to the specific students under, as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A2 and 8. Three, to consult with legal counsel and staff actual or probable litigation at specific legal matters involving staff and students as provided by Section 2.2-3711A1, 2, 7, and 8. Four, to consult with the legal counsel and receive legal advice regarding proposed resolutions relating to the pandemic under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. Five, to consult with the legal counsel and receive legal advice regarding PWCS nondiscrimination policies and regulations under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. Six, to consult with the superintendent and legal counsel regarding legal procedures relating to the conduct of board meetings under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. And seven, to receive information and to discuss with staff plans for the security of the Kelly Leadership Center and other school board facilities and property and the safety of persons using those facilities and property under the Virginia Code Section
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
My second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
Vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
So at this time, the Prince William County School Board will enter closed session and we will return in approximately one hour. We will be out at 7:00, so we're going to try to get this done, and if we can't get it done before 7:00, we'll go back into closed session at the end. So we'll be back out here at 7:00. Thank you. Excellent. So at this point, the Prince William County School Board will now re-enter public session. And we have a... Hold on, where am I? Yeah, moving on to closed session certification. Emotions in order. Ms. Dargapour.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to the Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of October 6, 2021, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each and every member's knowledge, one, only public business matters were lawfully exempted... Wait a minute, sorry about that. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
My second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to the closed session action items. 9.01, Ms. Dargapour.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments, contracts, and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
My second.
Ms. Jessie seconds. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to 9.02, emotions in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dargapour.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the request for religious exemptions for mandatory school attendance for students in case number RE21-10 through RE21-19.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ralston seconds. Any discussion? Great, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Excellent. Okay, moving on to... That would it? That's it. So I'd like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. At this point, we'll do the pledge of allegiance, and our student representative, Charlotte Flynn, can lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to 12.01, approval of the public meeting agenda. Emotions in order. Ms. Dargapour.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
My second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
I vote.
Okay.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Okay, great. Moving on to adoption of the consent agenda. Emotions in order. Ms. Dargapour.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
My second.
Ms. Jessie seconds a motion. Any discussion? Excellent. Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Great. Next, we're moving on to the citizen comment time. Those citizens who've signed up in advance for the clerk may address the school board this evening when they are called to the podium. We have four speakers on agenda items and nine speakers on non-agenda items. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. When you're called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. I will call the first speakers up to... We'll just go... The first speaker is Jennifer Rukowski, and then after her will be Riley O'Casey, Oveta Scott, and Melanie Duchato. So first is Ms. Jennifer Rukowski.
Awesome job pronouncing my name. Hi.
Speak a little closer into the mic if you don't mind.
I will try my best.
And a little bit louder through the mask.
I will project as best I can. Good evening, school board and superintendent. My name is Jennifer Rukowski. My address is on file with the clerk. I reside in the Okeechobee district, and I work for Prince William County Schools. To start off my citizen comment time, I'd like to read an excerpt from Trevor Noah's book, Born a Crime. In Germany, no child finishes school without learning about the Holocaust, not just the facts of it, but the how and why and the gravity of it, what it means. As a result, Germans grow up appropriately aware and apologetic. In America, the history of racism is taught like this. There was slavery, and then there was Jim Crow, and then there was MLK Jr., Martin Luther King Jr., and now it's done. It was the same for us in South Africa. Apartheid was bad, Nelson Mandela was freed, let's move on. Facts, but not many, and never the emotional or moral dimension. I was raised in the Jewish faith in a small suburb of Pittsburgh. In school, I definitely encountered lots of questions. Sometimes they were innocent, like, "Do you celebrate Halloween or Easter?" Sometimes they were insensitive, like, "Did you have any relatives that were in the Holocaust?" But too often, inappropriate remarks came my way, things like when a student said to me privately, "What Hitler did was right." In 2018, the synagogue where I had my bat mitzvah, Tree of Life in Squirrel Hill, Pennsylvania, 11 people were killed and six were injured. Students learn empathy when they learn that we are not all perfect, that we have done things wrong, and that we try to do better. Differences do not tear a community apart, they increase appreciation for diversity and reduce ignorance in the population. Our students already know that they are expected to do better with environmentalism in our community as they plan for the future. I also hope they'll grow up expecting to do better with acceptance, tolerance, and inclusion. I'm a member of the National Education Association and from the NEA ed justice website. No matter our color, background, or zip code, we want our kids to have an education that imparts honesty about who we are, integrity in how we treat others, and courage to do what's right. We demand that our schools have the resources to meet every child's needs with well-trained and supported teachers and curriculum that helps reckon with the past and shape our future. Thank you for passing your racial and social justice resolution and having the committee. Thank you.
Riley O'Casey.
Good evening, board members. Dr. McDade, my name is Riley O'Casey, and my address is on file. I hope everyone is doing well. It's been a while. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Ms. Williams, I'm excited to see the update on your racial and social justice committee. I was absolutely perplexed during the last few board meetings as to why there were so many Prince William County residents and citizens speaking against critical race theory. Where was this coming from? The national movement for many politicians to limit the teaching of America's history has unfortunately come to Prince William County. Please let me assure you that we are not teaching CRT. Let me say it again. We are not teaching CRT. I am a middle school civics teacher with 18 years of classroom experience, and never have I considered teaching CRT. However, I teach my students to think critically, to problem solve, to collaborate with classmates, to make wise decisions, and most importantly, I teach my students the truth. And I teach them to rely on a variety of sources when researching topics. I would strongly encourage those citizens, by the way, who are not all from Prince William County, who spoke against CRT, to spend a little more time researching the facts, perhaps reading or listening to multiple media or news sites. When one gets their information from only one source, one stays ignorant. Our students know this. My students know this. They know the truth, and they know the truth about America's history. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. Chairman, Dr. McDade. I'm smiling. My name is Oveta Scott, and my address is on file with the clerk. First, I totally respect our superintendent's call for all employees to be vaccinated. This is a call to ensure a safeguard from COVID-19, which is a deadly disease. Second, the baby bond time that can add to maternity leave and the security changes for our network with certain sites are both needed and appreciated. Tonight on the agenda, there is a payroll review, and I want to advocate for the review of staff pay who are working beyond normal contract time. Due to the shortage of bus drivers and the multiple runs, staff find themselves staying with students past the school day. Persons like myself, who are late to afternoon appointments, must either reschedule or pay a late fee. To offset this situation, there needs to be an hour pay added to those staff members incurring this additional time to their day. Next, the shortage of substitutes have led to a loss of planning time for teachers. If teachers cannot have the time needed to prepare lessons, work on grades, or follow up with parents, then we should be given additional pay for having to be the sub and perform work from home. Please consider these pay options because your employees are being impacted in a way that brings down morale in our buildings. Lastly, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I would like to state that in my 16 years of working for Prince William County Schools, I have always taught the Virginia standards of learning. I teach my students the truth, whether I'm teaching history or math. Last year, my class was in my students' home.
Point of order. Dr. Latif, I'd like to remind you that members, according to the policy, that speakers are supposed to confine their remark to the board item that they're signed up to speak about. And so I think you're veering away from the payroll.
I did speak to that. I'm at the end of my paragraph, please.
Right, go ahead and finish.
Thank you. I have always taught the Virginia standards of learning. I teach my students the truth, whether I'm teaching history or math. Last year, my class was in my students' home. Parents were able to view what I taught, how I taught, and every mannerism that I portray. So why the excitement over CRT when it's not in our state curriculum is beyond me. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
So as Division Counsel points out, we're going to try to stick to what is on the agenda items for those folks who signed up for the agenda spots because they took those spots from people who wanted to speak on that. So we'll go to Melanie Duchato. I'm sorry. Duchato.
Duchato.
Duchato, sorry.
I don't know if that's close enough. I'm Melanie Duchato. You have my address on file. First, I want to thank you for the expanded comment time, the three-minute speaker time, and the agenda transparency out in the lobby. These improvements have not gone unnoticed, so thank you. And I also signed up to speak about payroll because your salaries are probably included in that. So the salaries that we in this room are paying, and most of us feel that sometimes you aren't earning because you're not doing an effective job. So first, I want everyone to know that at the last board meeting, it was Prince William County Democrat Committee Chair Tanya James who caused the scene, resulting in security clearing the room.
Sorry, the policy requires you to speak to the agenda item, which is payroll.
I'm speaking about your salary. I'm speaking about payroll because we pay your salaries.
I believe that you have veered away from salary.
Right, so just stick to the salary of the folks here in the building, please.
Yes, your salaries are included in the payroll. And I'm speaking to how you are earning your salaries, so it is applicable. We, the parents, are not happy about the arbitrary capacity limits for the board meetings, so we'd like some explanation, speaking of transparency and doing your job for the parent.
Once again, ma'am, you are veering... You're not following the policy.
No.
And you are not speaking about payroll.
Are your salaries not included in payroll?
If you're talking...
Point.
Are your salaries not included under payroll?
You can speak to the topic of payroll and salaries, but you are going beyond that to speak about actions at the last meeting.
I'm talking about the job that the board is doing, for whom we pay the salaries. Okay, so we're asking for more transparency with the capacity limitations in the board meetings. So while we've seen some improvements tonight, we'd like someone to explain the reasoning behind the decisions for the capacity restrictions when there's no capacity restrictions out in the atrium. Second, your job, we're talking about salaries here, your job is to provide an excellent education for our kids, which a lot of us feel like is not happening. You're too focused on setting the stage for highly controversial curriculum that's rooted in Marxism called critical theory.
So Ms. Duchato, thank you so much.
Which specifically teaches our children to judge others by the color of their skin.
Ms. Duchato, you're violating the rules of the...
Am I not speaking about the job that you're doing for...
So...
To earn the salaries for what we pay? I'm talking about your salaries, and I'm talking about how we don't feel like you're earning them. That has absolute... That has everything to do with payroll, because we pay your salaries.
Understood. That understood, but talking about capacity limits has nothing to do right now with the payroll.
Yes, it does, because we're asking for more transparency and better communication. It is absolutely... If you would let me finish, you would understand how this all has to do with your salaries. So can you please?
Go ahead and wrap up your remarks. Go ahead and wrap up your remarks.
Okay, so it's critical theory teaches our children to judge others, not by the color of their skin, that no matter the level of the effort the child puts into their work, an equal outcome is the most important thing. And then if you are of a minority race, you're not capable of succeeding with hard work and determination. You're teaching minorities that it's because of their skin color that they are not able to be successful without lowering standards and disadvantaging other kids. Third, I want to address the recent vaccine and testing requirements for staff, because we all know this will eventually be a requirement for our children. I want you to ask yourself, what is the purpose of requiring vaccines for staff or weekly testing for those that decline? We're told that it's to reduce the transmission of the virus, thus protecting...
Thank you.
Please finish.
Ms. Duchato, our policy says if you want to speak on non-agenda items, you can sign up for that time slot. Those time slots were taken. The time slots that you were given were for specific agenda items for this evening. You are beyond that with the discussion on vaccines. You are more than welcome to sign up for our next board meeting, and you're more than welcome to send us emails and...
I'm...
And they are, and you spoke to that, but the vaccines are not part of that. So thank you. Thank you, ma'am. My next speaker will be Palmer Denny, then Richard Jessie, and then Emmett Fletcher.
A quick question to the school board council. I put on the list that I am going to be speaking about COVID protocols. Is that under agenda items?
You're on the non-agenda item list. You can speak to anything on the agenda or non-agenda, or rather, non-agenda.
Thank you. My name is Palmer Denny, and my address is on file. I've come before you tonight to inform you of scientific findings that you may not be aware of. On September 22nd, Dr. Martin Makary, an oncologist at John Hopkins University, gave an interview to WTOP. In that interview, he stated multiple facts about COVID, one being the efficacy of masks. Dr. Latif, I do hope you will follow the science here as you claim to. In the WTOP interview, Dr. Makary said that cloth and surgical masks are only about 11% effective at preventing the spread of COVID. 11%. That is far too low to warrant forcing masks on children as young as kindergarten. Further, the mortality rate from COVID in kids is 0.03%. We don't take any extraordinary precautions like these mandates to prevent anything else with a risk level that low. Further, have you considered the negative effects of prolonged mask wearing? From another piece by Dr. Makary, those who have myopia, nearsightedness, can have difficulty seeing because the mask fogs their glasses. Masks can cause severe acne and other skin problems. The discomfort of a mask distracts some children from learning. By increasing airway resistance during exhalation, masks can lead to increased levels of carbon dioxide in the blood, and masks can become vectors for pathogens if they become moist or used for too long. These downsides alone all outweigh the 11% effectiveness... Sorry, 11% protection granted by the masks. I would also like to add that in our own county, there have been little to no cases of students returning to school with lasting effects from COVID. COVID is not the threat to children that you say it is. 0.03% pediatric death rate. And finally, if these protocols are truly as effective as you claim they are, why is COVID still running rampant through our schools? I'll remind you that back in March of 2020, when we had two weeks to slow the spread, which turned into two years, when everyone was on board with staying home and wearing masks and social distancing and only going out when necessary, why were the numbers of cases and deaths the absolute worst of this pandemic? These protocols are ineffective at preventing a virus that is turning into the common cold. And as a student, an employee who must live with this, I strongly urge you to reconsider these ridiculous mandates.
Richard Jessie.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Richard Jessie. My address is on file. I want to talk to you about the omission of information and what happens when that happens. My kids were taught in high school that this person should be honored as a great American. And, you know, we understood that, and we followed the rules, and the kids did honor them. However, let me tell you some information that was omitted about this gentleman. He had sex with his slave, who was 14 to 15 at the time, had his first baby with her when she was 16, has six other kids with her, and even his own foundation has substantiated that through DNA that these kids were his. And yet, we honor this man. I have no problem honoring the man who wrote the Declaration of Independence. I have no problem honoring the man who was the third president of the United States. But the facts are that this man was basically a pedophile and a rapist. And in today's terms, we would not be honoring the person. In fact, if you look at it, Thomas Jefferson High School, the number-one high school in the country, is honoring a man that in today's terminology, we would never honor that much because when you have sex with a person at 14 to 15, have kids with them, I don't know what to say, other than the fact that, you know, the omission of information in our country is what's causing a lot of problems. And when we say that we don't teach critical race theory, that's correct. However, this country omits things so that we think people are better. We had no problems when Bill Cosby, who used to be the father of the United... You know, the greatest father in the world on the TV series. But once we found out about his sexual habits, people took names off the buildings and so forth. All I'm saying is that for history purposes and what we teach in school, we should be accurate in what we say in full disclosure. Thank you.
Emmett Fletcher.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, school board members, Dr. McDade. It's a real pleasure to be here this evening to witness the peaceful meeting that we're having compared to the last meeting. I want to thank the school board and the school personnel for all they are doing for our kids. It's been a tough two years, like someone has already said. I worked with Omega Psi Phi, and we've been in a lot of schools in Prince William County doing mentoring programs. We miss going out to the schools, and although we did it two years, almost two years, online, and the kids enjoyed it, but we miss the personal interaction with the kids and taking them on field trips. And we look forward to the in-class students getting back in class. Also, some of the kids that I know in throughout the county, they have lived in the county almost two years, and some of them are still doing, you know, the education with Zoom. When I went to school, it was very important for me to meet my friends. Some of those friends became lifetime friends, and that's important for the social development of our children. I understood what Mr. Jessie said, and that's history, what he said, and we need to recognize that. Also, we live in a different time right now. We're in the 21st century, and we all have to get along, whether we're black, white, Jews, or Gentiles. We have to get along, and some of the educators said she teaches the facts, and we have to teach the facts. I've been living in Prince William County for over 40 years, and we've always been a community that's been very positive. and we've always been a community that's been very positive and been very progressive. Although we have had differences, but we get along. And it's really nice to see the board and the members that attended this meeting behave as grownups. And I think you should be credited for that. Also, it's very important for us to check our behavior when we come in the door. Make sure that we are proper role models for the kids. We do have some little kids running around here and I'm sure we have children that's watching this on TV. So I ask you to continue the, the behavior that's been demonstrated here this evening. I ask the members that came to speak that they demonstrate behavior because Prince William County is a good county and I think we can lead the country by showing example. And I thank you for your time. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Ma'keah Little.
Going to have to do a bit of speed reading, so I'm going to have to remove my mask. Good evening. My name is Ma'keah Little. My address is on file. After watching the past month of school board meetings and observing last night's unsanctioned Prince William County Racial and Social Justice Commission Town Hall, I felt quite a few things need clarification. When my children attended West Ridge Elementary School for three consecutive years, I had to deal with an assignment they each received to pretend that they arrived at Ellis Island and to tell their classmates from where they had come. So before I was even ready to have the talk with my kids, I was forced to teach them that the story of their ancestors had nothing to do with Ellis Island. The tone deafness of this assignment made the unfortunate assumption that everyone experiences our nation in the same way and forced parents who look like me to develop our own curricular frameworks to teach our children their own history that was lacking from their public education at the time. In 2019, while preparing for the Virginia Studies SOL, my youngest brought home a study guide that taught her to memorize that the history of her ancestors was unknown and that they were either slaves or servants. By this time, I had had enough and brought my concerns to this very board. However, recognizing that curriculum is established at the state level, I took my concerns to the governor's office and was appointed as the parent and HBCU advocate of the African-American History Education Commission. One of the commission's tasks was to develop supports for culturally responsive teaching to ensure that tone deaf assignments such as the Ellis Island Project were eliminated from lessons plan, lesson plans to ensure that students throughout the Commonwealth could see themselves reflected in the state's level curriculum. Cultural competence is now, as it should be, a requirement of all Virginia's educators because Virginia's students are not a monolith. All of our ancestors did not come through Ellis Island and culturally responsive teaching acknowledges that. Despite what many may feel or believe, it is not, and I repeat, it is not, to put pit children against one another. Simply put, culturally responsive teaching acknowledges that the world does not revolve around a single culture or experience. Several parents who spoke at the last few school board meetings and even last night attacked an anthropological concept called critical race theory, also referred to as CRT. As a member of both the governor's African-American History Education Commission and as a charter member of the Virginia Superintendent's African-American Advisory Council, I want to attest to the fact that critical race theory is not being taught in Virginia's K through 12 public schools as it is a legal framework that seeks to critically examine the intersection of race and US law and would be a developmentally inappropriate topic. So if you are attacking CRT, I respectfully ask that you clarify as to which CRT you are referring because critical race theory is not being taught. However, culturally responsive teaching ensures that I will not have to supplement my child's education by teaching them the full story of our nation's history and how it fits, how they fit in it. If you are claiming that culturally responsive teaching has no place in our schools, then what you are in fact saying is that there is no problem-
Thank you, Ms. Little.
And I would like to extend-
Thank you, Ms. Little. The time is up.
I would like to extend my partnership to the board to host a sanctioned town hall to discuss the matter.
Jason, I need that clock set and it needs to continue. Reset the clock. Heather McCann. Jessica Newton will be after that. Isaiah McCann then after that. So Heather McCann next. And then Jason's, our, our folks, um, set the clock so they can see it. It stopped in, in the middle there or at the end.
Let me know when to go.
Hold on one sec. Do we have a clock, guys? Okay. All right, um, go ahead. The, the clerk will start the timer and she'll give you a warning in one, one minute. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Heather McCann.
All right. My name is Heather McCann. My address is on file with the clerk. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I do obviously want to speak about what happened at the last school board meeting. Um, that was shut down due to a disrupt, a disruption a Democrat committee chair had. As mentioned previously, her name was Tanya James. She and many others that are teachers with this county or staff members were here with her. They all looked to be together. The first ladies that spoke here tonight at the podium were in that crowd. Parents did not shut this meeting down. The meeting was delayed due to a closed session prior to us coming out for this meeting. So we waited. While waiting, at one point, a veteran in the room asked if vets were present, which several were, and proceeded with singing the National Anthem. After we were done singing, Tanya stood and shouted at the gentleman sitting behind her. I don't know why, and others sitting in the crowd she also yelled at. When we were done singing, she shouted more at the gentleman behind her along with other people in the crowd yelling F you and sharing some other vulgar words. We called for security quite a few times, which never happened. The security didn't come until the rest of the people that were with Tanya showed up and then we were dismissed from the meeting. All of this was on video and has been shared several times in many ways on social media, news platforms. What I, what seemed suspect to me that night was there were several news channels, news stations that were there that seemed odd to me that were recording this footage and the footage was manipulated in several ways. Even one of the news stations posted a picture of me and my son front and center exposing, I mean, not exposing, but spreading lies, which was, what they said did not happen. Once we were all outside, since we were told to leave, we were talking amongst ourselves and shared bravely-
One minute warning.
Okay, thank you. My son spoke, spoke bravely in front of the crowd. He is sitting behind me tonight. One of the, one of the ladies in that crowd with Tanya James heckled at my son and yelled at him while he was speaking, which was incredibly rude and no adult should ever talk to a child that way. How dare these women who are apparently county staff members and teachers act in such a way? Would you do that to your children or your students? My son respectfully responded with telling all of them that he hopes they come to the Lord and may God bless them. Again, there are videos for proof. He continued to say that we shouldn't have to come to this and we shouldn't shout at each other. As his mother, I am incredibly proud of him for that moment. My child didn't react with revenge. Instead, he was respectful and glorified the Lord. How my son, I was extremely disappointed at how my son was yelled at and how this meeting was wrongfully dismissed. I am proud to stand here with the parents behind me tonight so we can discuss how we feel because our-
That's time, Ms. McCann.
All right, thank you.
Jessica Newton. Jessica Newton.
Hi, yes, I'm Jessica Newton from Gainesville, Virginia. You guys have my address on file. I've been so conflicted on how to present this information all week because I cannot bring myself to orate some of the most explicit lines in this book, but because I feel parents may have no idea and need to be informed, I'm going to power through. Lawn Boy is a book by Jonathan Evison that you can check out at many high schools in our county. On page 19 of this critically acclaimed novel, quote, "Not that it really matters. In fourth grade at a church youth group meeting out in the bushes, I touched Doug Goble's D and he touched mine." In fact, there was even some mouths involved. On page 91, uh, what if I told you I touched another guy's D? What if I told you I sucked it? I was 10 years old, but it's true. I put Doug Goble's D in my mouth. I was in fourth grade. It was no big deal. He sucked mine too and you know what? It wasn't terrible. I do believe that everyone here would agree this is pretty X-rated content, not appropriate for any grade level. So I'm just curious, after the national attention this has obviously gotten in the past few weeks, why you just haven't taken the initiative and removed it until it can be reviewed? It's almost like you're endorsing it by ignoring this glaring issue. I and many more of your constituents have lost trust in the school board. Dr. Latif, I'll never forget reading the text messages in a FOIA request where you say, "I don't believe in transparency or public discussion." In August, Superintendent Latania McDade said a vaccine mandate is quote, "worth exploring", but that she wasn't working on it. Then weeks later, unanimous vote goes down after not allowing any parents to weigh in on the subject. I've heard more than one of you speak out against it in the past. I'm legitimately scared for my children at this point. I'm finding out that the FBI is being pulled in. We'll start investigating parents that come here upset if any of their actions are deemed harassing, violent, or threatening. Seems innocent enough unless you know that Prince William County schools are putting teachers through cultural competency trainings that label MAGA-toting citizens as overtly white supremacist. Who knew supporting the last sitting president was white supremacist? I have quite a few MAGA hats. Should I be worried is a MAGA hat threatening? I feel that the lines are becoming blurred and because of the extra security we've been having here lately especially. I haven't seen or heard anyone threatening a school board member at any of these meetings. Calling one a liar, maybe. Thank you. And with the last 54 seconds, I'm going to finish the rest of Mel's speech. We're told that it's to reduce the transmission of this virus, these vaccine mandates, thus protecting-
Point of order, the, um-
But what the CDC has been very clear about is that the injection does not prevent transmission. It says only it prevents a serious case of the illness. So one could be infected, could be asymptomatic, attend school, and transmit it. So I ask you, how is this requirement protecting anyone? If that is the goal, then the entire staff should be tested regularly, especially the vaccinated because they may not show symptoms, which would normally trigger them to call in sick and stay home. On the other hand, if the requirement is to protect the individual, then leave it to the individual to make this very personal decision. Where there is risk, there must be choice and there is always risk with pharmaceutical products. Our young children are at the lowest risk of serious infection and highest risk of serious cardiac-related adverse events like myocarditis, L.A.S.M.I. Lastly, let me remind you again that you work for us. You are our elected representatives and you-
Thank you, Ms. Newton.
-should be doing just that, representing us. Thank you.
Isaiah McCann.
Oh, okay. Good evening. My name is Isaiah. Um, my address is on file. My main point is, this is coming straight from the heart, what I believe our school board should be doing to fix our county and stop what is going on right now. Here are a few points. Manly, stay in your lane. You do not have to get involved with political agendas. You do not have to get involved with public health, although it is good to keep people safe. Education is free in America. So if anyone was ever to, going to contemplate any type of vaccine mandate or anything else that was going to limit students from going to school, that sounds like discrimination to me. And I, it's not good for our county because of how... It is just not good. I don't get it how we have to get the protection to protect the unprotected, and to protect ourselves at the same time. It doesn't make sense to me. Why? Like, we haven't even talked about it, but still, I feel like that is going to come along the line very, very soon because we already see other people starting to, um, implement, what's the word? They're already starting to put it in. My second point is the Racial and Social Justice Board does not do anything. It does not glorify black people. It does not help us in any single way or form. Equity is not equality. It does not help anyone in any way because putting in political agenda books, putting books about social justice in a high school, that is no place, that has no place in any school. You are, you are only to teach history, math, science, history, math, science, and language arts. It does not glorify me as a black person to see these divisions of the school board being put out because I do not need to, someone else to stand up for me. I am not a victim. There is no need for this board and everyone who was on, a lot of people, one of the people that was on that board was here last week. And he was recognized and didn't say anything. My third point, let me get my phone. Actually, never mind. My third point is you are not listening to what your people are needing. Your people need someone who will stand up for them, who knows that they serve them alone and that we do not serve the school board. We do not serve you. You serve us. And if you are not going to listen, then there is no point of you being in these seats. You are obviously-
Thank you, Mr. McCann. John Avilas.
Close enough. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, my family settled in Prince William County after my wife retired from the military. And since then, I've been proud to be a community member, a Prince William County Schools parent, and a frequent substitute teacher and volunteer in the schools and community. Um, I was telling some kids the other day, boy, if I didn't enjoy being around kids and supporting the future of this community, I've made some bad life choices. So first, thank you. Thank you to the schools for your effort to bring back all the teachers and students in person this year. Last year was truly miserable and was a terrible time for my kids. The enforcement of the mask mandates, the vaccine mandate you passed last month, and all the other common sense policies supported by experts and supported by past practice, these all make me feel safer. They make me feel better about having my kids in school and make me feel more likely to substitute because as you all know, there's a desperate need for subs in our schools right now. Keeps our kids in school and learning. Personally, I would like to see the board add the COVID vaccines to the list that students are required to have as they're approved for use in those age groups and as they, as they reach full approval. Along with MMR, polio, every other vaccine that I got, let's go ahead and add COVID to that list for them. We can even have clinics in the schools once they're approved, hopefully this fall. I'd love to see the school board start working on that. I hope the board continues listening to good sense and expertise in all their decision-making. I'd also like to ask you all to keep making efforts to improve bus service for all students, including our special needs kids. I had a great conversation today with Transportation Office. I think they share the urgency we feel in the community that we can't have changes day after day. It's very hard. Uh, my family's lucky. I can drive my son to high school. Not everybody's that lucky. We, they depend on those buses and they can't be standing outside. I'd love to see more transparency from the top about what's being done about buses. Just, so that's what we're talking about out there, day to day at the bus stop. We're talking about, boy, who's in quarantine? Are our kids getting a ride to school today? That's what's on the minds of people out there in the community and in the schools, the teachers also. And you know what we're not talking about? We're not talking about manufactured controversies sustained by national media for money and outrage. We're thinking, we know what our kids are learning. We're talking to our teachers. We see what they bring home every day. We're involved parents. So we're not listening to the national media. We're not listening to all that. Thank you all so much.
Mr. Jeffrey Fuller. Jeffrey Fuller. Okay, so that, that wraps it up. Uh, I was notified the last one's not here as well. Okay. So at this point, we'll move- Um, no, I don't have any further signups. This is what we were given and this is what we're going with. Thank you. If there's been any confusion, you certainly can sign up for the next board meeting. But as far as from the clerk's office with the new current policy, this was the signup list. We've gone through that. He can sign up at the next meeting, sir. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the student representative part of the meeting at this point. Ms. Charlotte Flynn.
Good evening, school board members in Prince William County. Tonight, I want to address the matter of student participation within schools. Since the beginning of the school year, I have seen so many clubs brought back from the pandemic. These activities have increased student participation and influenced mental health, creating a positive and inclusive environment that all students can enjoy. I encourage PWCS students to be more involved in extracurricular activities, especially after being isolated for a year. However, with this in mind, it is important to be considerate of the faculty and facilities being used. I want to highlight the destruction of the bathrooms and other facilities. This has been a recent trend among high school students, but these actions are unacceptable and damage the integrity and reputation of PWCS schools. Please be considerate of the janitors and cleaning staff that work to resolve these issues and remember that school is a- issues, and remember that school is a place of learning. This is for the well-being of the student body and the staff. Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight on this subject. I appreciate your time and hope to see, I hope to continue to see inclusivity and respect it in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. We really appreciate that. Moving on to superintendent's time. Dr. McDade.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I would like to begin the superintendent's report with gratitude. The past six weeks have been filled with many successes, as well as some challenges. Thanks to the hard work and dedication of our PWCS leaders, educators, support staff, and the entire school community, our students are continuing to learn alongside their peers, both virtually and in person. It has been a joy to witness, and there is so much to be proud of this year. For example, we opened two new schools this school year. Last week, I had the privilege of attending Gainesville High School's ribbon cutting, and I'm looking forward to another ribbon cutting tomorrow night at Potomac Shores Middle School. I enjoy participating in events that celebrate the growth of our school division and community, as well as state-of-the-art facilities for our students and schools. We continue to grapple with the complexities of COVID-19 and remain committed to implementing layered mitigation strategies. Tonight, the school board approved contracts for the procurement of air purifiers and water bottle fillers. This will allow us to air, add air purifiers to all of our portable classrooms and begin the process of replacing water fountains with water bottle fillers throughout the division. We are pleased to announce that we are partnering with the Prince William Service Authority, who is generously donating 1,000 water bottles for students who may need them. We appreciate this partnership tremendously. The air purifiers and water bottle fillers will support our efforts to prevent the spread of COVID-19. I want to address some of the questions that we received about quarantine. We will continue to follow guidance from the Virginia Department of Health on appropriate quarantine processes. When quarantine is necessary, it is always our goal to return our students to the classroom as quickly and safely as possible. Following VDH quarantine guidelines, there are opportunities to reduce quarantine times for students who are healthy. If a student must quarantine, they can test on the fifth day, allowing them to return to school after the seventh day. We also encourage parents to share with schools when their student is ill and that illness has not been confirmed, it's confirmed that it is not COVID-19. Additionally, we are working diligently to connect our families to community resources to provide support, and as a school division, we have signed up for the VDOE Vista Program to support additional COVID-19 testing. It is also important to note that currently, 1.2% of the students in the division are in quarantine, which is a very small percentage of the overall school population, which is close to 90,000 students attending in person. Most of the students required to quarantine are not eligible for the vaccination, which is why it is reassuring to learn last week's news from Pfizer. We now have data that confirms the two-dose vaccine is safe for children ages five to 11. This is critically important, as some of our elementary-age students will soon be eligible for vaccination. We will continue following the science closely and urge everyone to get vaccinated when eligible. We know that this is the best mitigation strategy and eliminates the need for quarantine in most cases. I am excited to share an update that will have a positive impact on our staff members who have been working so hard during the pandemic to provide a quality education to our students. PWCS will now permit employees with accrued sick leave to use up to four weeks for baby bonding, in addition to the paid leave for the medically necessary period for the parent giving birth. Both parents are eligible to use accrued sick leave for up to four weeks paid leave for baby bonding. The changes are effective immediately. This recommendation was based on employee feedbacks, feedback and suggestions, and as part of the continuing PWCS commitment to creating a positive climate and culture for all employees. We will continue to listen to our employees and respond to their feedback. This includes acknowledging that school buses continue to be a challenge as we struggle with staffing shortages that are experienced by school divisions nationwide. We want to acknowledge that we are aware of employees remaining beyond contract hours to supervise students due to bus delays, and we are working towards a resolution to address these challenges as quickly as possible, and our employees should expect to hear more about how we will address this in the coming week. We value the hard work of all of our employees and appreciate their unwavering commitment, and will continue to be responsive to their needs. Prince William County Public Schools' responsibility and my personal commitment is to ensure every student in the division feels a sense of belonging and has access to safe spaces that are conducive to learning. Earlier this year, the General Assembly passed the Virginia Human Rights Act requiring the policies of educational institutions, including Prince William County Public Schools, to safeguard all individuals within the Commonwealth from unlawful discrimination because of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions, age, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity, military status, or disability in places of public accommodation. The school board is updating Policy 738 in accordance with Virginia law, case law, and federal law. This update ensures the division's policy statements pertaining to non-discrimination are consistent with state and federal law and extend to transgender and gender nonconforming students. The policy also makes clear that Prince William County Public Schools are required by state law to implement the Virginia Department of Education's model policies for treatment of transgender students in Virginia public schools. PWCS administration is studying our current regulation in response to feedback from staff and community members. Based upon additional review and the feedback we've received, the regulation associated with Policy 738 will be reissued with the goal of addressing concerns raised while also ensuring alignment with the Virginia Department of Education model policies for treatment of transgender students in Virginia's public schools. Additionally, training for staff will be delivered this school year. All Prince William County School students have a fundamental right to access educational programs and facilities that are safe and supportive of their physical, emotional, social, and academic needs. It is our mission to ensure every school community is inclusive, appreciates diversity, students have a sense of belonging, and are affirmed in their identity. This is the only way we can ensure a positive and welcoming environment where every student can learn, graduate, and create thriving futures for themselves and their community. Mr. Chairman, this concludes the superintendent's report.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. McDade. Thank you very much. We will move on next to the update from Ms. Williams on the Racial and Social Justice Commission, where she sits as a representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to update the school division and members of the audience, the last full commission meeting was held on September 23, 2021. The commission held two listening sessions. One was the community survey results that was hosted by Prince William County Government. The second was the 20, update on for the 2020 census status. Just a little fun fact, if anyone missed it. Prince William County is now the 10th most diverse county in the entire United States. The Chief of Police gave a report on the use of force, and we also discussed Robert's Rule of Order regarding a previous motion. Critical race theory, cultural slash cultural responsive teaching was discussed. The discussion entertained the difference between the VODs. We also discussed the difference between VOD, VDOE, excuse me, suggested materials versus the mandated curriculum. Commission deemed CRT is not within the scope of the full commission. Staff and lead participation in supporting committees was also discussed. The education, now I'm going to move to an update on the education committee, which is a subcommittee of the commission. We met on September 20, and again on October 4. At the September 20 meeting, a presentation was made by Battlefield student Mohammed Youssef, excuse me, on the student perspective on racial and social justice. Race and education presentation was made by Mr. Paul Lott, a representative for the National Society for the Advancement of Black Americans. At the October 4 meeting, the education committee began a work session on information to be submitted to the full commission for the December commission report. The next working session will be held on Monday, October 18 at 6:30, the McCourt Building. And then a town hall was held on October 5 at Patriot High School that was, I want to make clear that was not an authorized commission meeting. The main focus of the town hall was related to schools. And I also want to assure the public and be very clear in stating that no Prince William County School staff member or school board member provided input on the materials that were presented, nor were the materials representative of Prince William County Schools or authorized by Prince William County Schools. The next meeting of the Racial and Social Justice Commission in its full body will be October 21 at 6:30 PM at the McCourt Building.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Moving on to revision of Policy 651, School Counseling Services. It's on for first reading. Pull that up. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. McDade or the staff regarding this one? And this on your, on your computer will be 17.02. The justification is in the public documents section, as is the red line of the changes. This will be on for first reading, and the school board will vote on this at its next meeting. There's time for public comment via email and board members to address with staff and Dr. McDade, if there's any questions. Okay, moving on to 1703, which is much of what Dr. McDade discussed in her superintendent's time, was the revision on Policy 738. This item is also on for misinformation, and we'll be voting on this in two weeks. Again, this is open for public comment. Again, documents are posted to the board docs, and members can continue to ask questions, concerns, voice your concerns to each other or the superintendent, and we will be back here in two weeks to vote on this. Okay, at this point, we will go to board matters, which we have skipped over the last few meetings, and so I promised the board members time, and so we'll go five minutes. Is that okay? Is everyone okay with that? Five, six minutes? Okay, so we'll put the clock on for five, and we'll just go down. We'll start with Mr. Wilk. Okay, wow. He might take 10 minutes.
No, I won't.
No, I'm just joking. Take what you need.
I'll follow our guidelines. First, I've been able to visit every one of my buildings at least once during the day to make classroom visits and talk to teachers, talk to students. I had the pleasure of being in Ms. Garrity's room at Forest Park, always welcome there to talk to her AP government students, read books to younger students, interact in a music circle, all the good things that come with being a board member and being able to go to schools. I'm also able to talk to my principals about the direction of where things are and solicit feedback on how things are going when it comes to the actual practice of the policies we pass as board members. We'll get to some of that in a second. We also, many of us will probably highlight and talk about all the back-to-school nights that have stretched back a couple weeks, starting and commencing with high schools. So I've been pleased to be hyperactive and gone most nights of the week, but attending Forest Park, Potomac High Schools, Grand Park, Potomac Middle School, Potomac Shore Middle School, Ashland, Montclair, and Henderson, and then there's one after the ribbon cutting. I will be leaving early to make sure I'm at Swan's Creek tomorrow, and then there's more next week. So my goal is to make sure I'm at every one of them, handing out widely popular back-to-school calendar magnets that are division that I have. So that's that, so I will continue that process. And I've also enjoyed talking to parents. Parents are very approachable. They come to me, ask me questions about the division, and that's one of the nice things I like about being at all these events, is making myself available. I'm not mentioning the three different PTO meetings I went to in person at various schools, because a lot of times, those are very active parents, the ones who definitely have some topics they might want to address with you. I've also, some highlights of some things that I've been able to do in other events is, of course, I've had the pleasure of going to three high school football games, two thus far at Forest Park and one at Potomac High School, being a part of the stands, seeing the new band uniforms that I sponsored and supported two years ago in Dr. Waltz's budget. Just great to see the recognition, the work that's being done at those schools. Forest Park is finally about to unveil. It's been a lot of work, a lot of delays with construction as a result of COVID-19, but we will be back in business and have our first home game in a long time on Friday night homecoming. If anyone goes there, you'll see a state-of-the-art, excuse me, state-of-the-art new turf field and a beautiful royal blue track, which we do not have in this county, so that is finally getting done. Forest Park is also one of the two schools that I was able to advocate for, to open our high school tracks and make available to the community and taxpayers, and that will reconvene once the track is finished there. Another couple of events that, you know, looking at things that I'm very proud of is Triangle Elementary had an outdoor fall festival the other night, right before some of the back-to-school nights, and Triangle is a Title I school, and a lot of times, these back-to-school, these Title I nights are often tough to get people and reach people. But I'm very proud of the work Principal Devers and his staff did. There were over 150 families at this outdoor fall festival event, so I'm very proud of the work. Got to work at the pizza station and the water station for about an hour and a half or so and helped the families, and it was a great night, great collaboration, talking to the families there. You know, another big thing that's unfortunately made the news is a misconception about the 9/11 committee that Ms. Wall and I sponsored well over nine, 10 months ago, well before the state issued watered-down policies that were not mandates, that we did not follow as a school division. They were not requirements, as might have been heard at a racial social justice committee. But it was great to be in those buildings. Want to recognize Potomac Shores Middle School. Their entire staff had 9/11 commemorative Remember shirts that every staff member was provided there, so I thought that was a great event. I also want to mention that I was at Dumfries Elementary for a dedication of a bench for a longtime front office secretary, Ms. Jackie there, who passed away, but it was a great dedication ceremony. Dr. McDade was there as well. So lots of great happenings. Just to wrap things up, a couple of things, you know, I know people want to address. It's been talked about already, 22 seconds. The quarantine policies, Dr. McDade already brought up some changes potentially in looking at that. The other concerns in looking at the nurses, they are spending a lot of time, stretched very thin with the contact tracing and working into the nights and weekends. Want to look at something for them that we can help that doesn't come out of the site-based budget. And then finally, again, this is an obvious issue, but I think as a board, we need to look in the future of how to, how to attract more bus drivers, because that is not only a Prince William issue, but that is a national issue, as illustrated on the news cycle. So I'm a little over. I apologize, Dr. Latif, but it's been a while since I got to talk.
Absolutely. Ms. Adele Jackson, Brentsville District.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. It was a busy last month, as 97% of our students have returned and about 2, 2,700 are learning virtually. I continue to be very grateful for all Prince William County staff, including those supporting our virtual students. I know the pandemic has been incredibly hard on staff, students, and families, and I appreciate the examples of grace and kindness I see every day. I also have attended a bunch of Baptist school nights and extend my gratitude to administration and staff for giving me a tour or taking time to meet with me during this busy night. And I really have enjoyed meeting the community members at the schools. It's my smart goal to attend all back-to-school nights, and I have a bunch more to go. I had the privilege of attending a wonderful event at Patriot High School, which honored the anniversary of two wonderful schools, which was TK Wood and Patriot High School. So I just want to send another congratulations to them. And then last week, I had the honor to attend the ribbon cutting at Gainesville High School and the dedication of the Library and Media Center to Officer Gwenden and the Student Services Center to Ms. Olick. It was a, it was a wonderful event. It was a beautiful display honoring Officer Gwenden, and I want to thank the Cardinals and Principal Beach. and Principal Beach. I too have attended a bunch of games, including last weekend at Brentsville District High School, and congratulations to them for their win. My family and I really enjoyed attending the event, is their homecoming game. I try, I'm going to try to attend games at all high schools. I know that a few of our board, like Ms. Zagapor and Ms. Wall, are also attending some of them with me, and hopefully at some near points, some games at middle schools. So just a variety of sports, and I just want to thank my fellow board members for also going to the games with me. Thank you to the division for the extra four weeks of baby bonding. I really appreciate that. It would have really come in handy when I'd had twins. Lastly, I want to thank administration for taking the time to prepare materials and share materials in advance of these meetings, and for being open to take all questions ahead of time, especially for including some of the questions in the presentations. It really does help ensure that meetings are productive and allows for me to apply pertinent emails from constituents and ask or relay questions with the goal to reach a broader audience. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jennifer Wall, Gainesville District.
So recently, the board approved Policy 117, School Board Code of Ethics, Professional Standards and Protocols. So, in the interest of helping the public know more about the board and how we operate, I would like to share item number one. School boards members shall, one, model professional behavior at all times in their interactions with each other, with the administration, and with the public, and adhere to the professional standards of conduct expected of all employees of the Prince William County Public Schools as provided in Policy 503 and Regulation 503-1, Code of Conduct. As far as happenings that affect the Gainesville District, I want to congratulate Principal Beach and staff on the successful opening of Gainesville High School. I know it's not in my district, but it does bear the name of my district, and a lot of students from my district attend Gainesville High School. It's a fantastic school, beautiful, and I'm so excited to finally see it open. My own high school students have attended Battlefield High School during its most crowded days for a number of years, so for my family, this has been really exciting. It has given much-needed relief to the overcrowding at Battlefield, Patriot, and Unity Reed, and I loved the ribbon-cutting ceremony and the dedication of the Ashley Gwenden Media Center and the Lilian Orlick Student Services Center, so congratulations to those, both of those families for those honors. So back to school nights, we've already talked a little bit about that. Those are in full swing. I've been able to stop by Battlefield, Bull Run, Reagan, Unity, Braxton, Sudley, and Alvy so far. I'm looking forward to visiting the rest of the elementary schools in the given coming weeks. It's given me a chance to visit with administration, staff, and parents and get a better idea of what people are talking about, what their concerns are, how things are going, and I've really appreciated that. Fall sports are also in full swing. I love sports, so it's been really fun. I can't tell you how happy it makes me feel to see our athletes succeeding on our fields and our courts. I even got to attend a band competition at Woodbridge, hosted by the Woodbridge Vikings, and, I mean, I don't even have a student in band anymore, but it was so awesome to attend. It was fantastic. And hearing those bands and seeing those kids marching around playing was just like the highlight of my week. I want to reflect for just a few minutes on what a difference a year makes. Last fall, we were overwhelmed with the enormous task of figuring out how to do school in the midst of crippling fear and educational upheaval, and I'm reminded of the opening lines from Dickens, A Tale of Two Cities. It was the best of times, it was the worst of times, except a year ago, some could reasonably argue that it was simply the worst of times. As I reflect on all we've been through together and where we are today, with 97% of our students back in buildings, learning in classrooms with their teachers, I'm reminded of another Dickens quote, sorry, I love Dickens. Reflect upon your present blessings, of which every man has plenty, not on your past misfortunes, of which all men have some. In the spirit of reflection on blessings, I'm grateful for our school families, who have been patient with late buses, missing teachers, restrictive mask rules, and especially quarantines. I'm thankful to citizens who reach out through email, phone calls, social media, and even in person. You help us remember that we represent you. I work every day to listen and help. I may not always succeed, I may not always agree, but thank you for helping me see those problems and issues. Because of the pandemic, this is my first opportunity as a board member to attend those back-to-school nights across my district, and I do appreciate the chance that I've had to meet with people and hear your concerns and see your beautiful classrooms, and the students I know are really appreciative of the teachers and the efforts that they're making. I'm thankful for Dr. McDade and her division leadership, and I'm confident that we're in great hands. To citizens who spoke to the board tonight, I will carefully consider what you have shared. You have a right to speak, to petition us, to share your concerns, and I appreciate your exercising that right. And lastly, in all, I believe we're off to a great start. We have many challenges, but to quote the first lines of my dad's favorite poem, "It's the steady, constant driving to the goal for which you're striving, not the speed with which you travel that will make the victor sure. It's the iron will to do it, the steady sticking to it, so whatever your task, go to it, and life's purpose you will win." Thanks to everybody. Good night.
I feel like I should applause. Ms. Lori Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It has been quite some time since we were able to do this. So I just want to give a special shout-out to all of our virtual students, who we just don't talk about enough, as well as the staff that supports them. I want to be very clear in stating that I know that it got off to a rough start for a lot of families who are doing virtual, but it has continued to improve, and I expect it will continue to improve throughout the remainder of the school year. I want to know, I want to make clear also that the many families had started the school year off feeling not very included, but that I do believe that the tide has changed. There have been many wonderful instances of celebration of our virtual students during virtual classrooms, and I know in our household that we have felt very much in touch with our base school. The communication has improved and been cleared, and feel very much a part of our base school family. I want to give a special shout-out to Freedom High School. I was able to stop by there, not only for the 9/11 event ceremony, which was beautiful, and I want to commend the junior ROTC on their ceremonial activities, but also for back-to-school night. I'm not sure that many, before I do that, excuse me, I also want to say to my other remaining schools, I have not been as active this year in back-to-school nights as I have been in the past, but I will be making my rounds, and you are not forgotten. I appreciate everything that you do and look forward to being able to stop by and see you in person. I'm not sure that many of the public are aware, but many of us board members also participate in a lot of trainings and conferences outside of our time here on the dais. I was able to participate in the VSBA Legislative Advocacy Conference, as well as the VSBA Conference on Education, and there were other few non-VSBA trainings and conferences that I took part in since July, really up until now. Next month in November is when most of this board will be participating in the VSBA State Conference. I would like to remind everyone that upcoming, if you have not yet registered, thanks to Mr. Wilk speaking about Title I and family engagements, there is a family engagement series on October 12th that is Families as Literary Partners. I would highly encourage everyone to sign up. Information can be found, I'm sure, on our Prince William County Schools website. As far as community events go, it is something that most of us do as school board members, is we not only participate in school activities and games and such, but other activities where we have opportunities to interact with members of the public and to allow the public to know that we care in different ways. I was able to attend the first annual Prince William County Police and Unity Event, which was a wonderful partnership between the county government and the police and the community. There were lots of children in attendance, so it was really nice to see some kids out and to see the Prince William County Police there in person in all of their different departments and interact with citizens in the community. It was a lot of fun. We also had another recent first in Prince William County, which was the Prince William County Equality Pride Day, which was held in Manassas. Again, it was nice to see lots of different types of families and interact with members of the public. And then, previously, before the school year started, there were a few events that were held for backpack drives and community within my district I was very proud to participate in. Omega Sci-Fi actually was in partnership with one of them, so it's nice to see the continued work with members of the NPHC and the school division, because it's all about partnership. And lastly, I just want to piggyback off what Ms. Wall said, encourage everyone to read all of the Code of Ethics that were recently updated, because no one is more important than the other, and they all matter, and to remind the public as well that the use of technology is here to stay. We've had a lot of, or I've received a lot of comments about continual laptop use or use of Canvas, and it's important to know that we hear from business partners in the community that they expect us to produce digitally literate citizens, and Canvas and use of laptops is very much a part of that, and to check for recent updates on what your child can and cannot access on their laptops. I believe guidance just went out. And the last thing I want to say in regards to public comment is there seems to be some misconception about the only time that people can make comments to the board is here at board meetings, and I want to remind the public of our newly passed policy and that you are more than welcome to call, email, text, however, video to this board. We listen to comments. Just because you are listened to does not mean that we are going to act on every comment, but that does not mean that you are not heard. Thank you, and I hope you all have a good night.
Ms. Jessie, and then after Ms. Jessie, we'll do Ms. Ralston. Ms. Jessie Okaquan, District. And that was just Ms. Williams from the Woodbridge District, sorry. Ms. Jessie Okaquan, Ms. Sir.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to start off with the first visit that I actually had was a sad visit. It was the death of Mr. Fred Moore, a coach at Woodbridge High School. I want to commend the Woodbridge High School staff and the students and the football players, how they celebrated the life of this young man, who was also a math teacher in his school. And Dr. McDade was there, and many of us were there. There was a celebration during the football game the following Friday evening. I was not in attendance, but Mr. Moore was an Omega, and his favorite colors were purple and gold, and everyone in the, all the students wore purple that night. The following weekend, however, we had a Hall of Fame celebration of the athletes at Woodbridge High School, and there's a wall where they frame all of these, they provide a framing wall for all of these Hall of Fame entries, and I, my husband and I attended that. I want to start off with something a little bit different, because I think you're going to notice a difference in this boardroom and the responses of the board, not just because of the Code of Ethics, but because of the tremendous leadership we're receiving from the superintendent. You want to find that many of the questions that we asked in the past, we're no longer going to ask, need to ask, because she and her executive staff has established a communication plan, which includes timeliness and transparency in the form of briefing meetings with board members prior to the actual board meeting. I want to thank you, Dr. McDade, for giving us that opportunity, because you know, me in particular, I do have a lot of questions, and you try to answer all of them, and Lori and I are together, and that creates kind of a situation, but I'd rather ask the questions in private and get the answers than to ask them in a public forum. The other things, I've been on this board, I'm probably the veteran member rank, I don't want to say oldest, but I am. But anyway, I want to say that we received the preliminary data, we have the data, because instruction is important. And I have a slide of a quote that I think you guys have in there that I wanted to share with you, because I think it says everything about who, what we, Ms. Dr. McDade and her staff. And it said, I received this from a special education person probably 15 years ago, and it says, "Our job is to teach the kids we have, not the ones we'd like to have, not the ones we used to have, those we have right now, all of them." And I want to thank you for, because I think that's your philosophy. Secondly, on school visits, I attended all of my schools, and I have this thing about waiting until the dust settles, because I was a principal, and I know that first week of school is crazy, and you don't have time to talk to people, and I heard a lot, and there's such dedication and professionalism, and I have to tell you that it was stressful last year, it's still stressful, and that's what I heard, and I think other board members heard the same thing. I want to congratulate all of you, because you stepped up to the plate, you did the work, and you continue to do the work. I think we left last year thinking everything is going to be great once the kids came back. The one theme I heard was that we're glad to have the kids back, but they are stressed out, the nurses are stressed out, there's so much going on, and the newness of all the COVID, the COVID situation is really causing situations, and I brought that information back to Mr. McDade, Dr. McDade. An example of celebration, there's still, teachers are doing wonderful things. I see them just creating opportunities. I was at Springwoods Elementary, and I think I have a slide for, from Springwoods. This is their celebration trophy in the hallway, and they have these different houses, and they celebrate, and I'm not sure how frequently they celebrate, but when I went to all the schools, I saw this type of thing. The buildings are beautiful, the buildings, in fact, I was at Jenkins, and I said, "Wow." The custodial staff, I want, Mr. Shiroki, every building I went into, I said, "Wow, look at this building." The floors were shining, and someone said, "This is how all Prince William County Schools look." So I wanted just to share my cup of gratitude to all of you. We are looking, we understand. Someone said, "Just tell us that you are aware of what's going on and that you care about us." I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for being you. Thank you.
Ms. Diane Ralston, Niabsco District. Ms. Ralston?
Pass, please.
Okay. Next, we'll go to Ms., the Vice Chair, Ms. Lisa Zagapor, Coles District.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. It has been a long time since we've been able to sit here and do Board Matters. Thank you to all of the folks who come here to speak at public comment time. It is important that we hear what you have to say, and please, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but I will take emails, listen to what you have to say, I'm happy to do a phone call, just so you know, because sometimes it feels very, it's, well, right now, it's super physically distanced in this room, but even just coming and speaking to us has a certain formality, and if you, if you want to reach out, I'm happy to speak. Now I'm going to get 1,000 things to do, aren't I? So it's all good. Dr. McDade, thank you so much for the information that we received before these board meetings. The intent is to make sure that we are able to do the public's business more efficiently. So this has been a great start to the school year, and I'm very appreciative of that. This was a rough school year, and like Ms. Wall said, you know, now we can, we can start anew. A year ago, it was completely different. Had the opportunity to watch the Hilton Boys soccer team win the world, or excuse me, the state championship. They were invited to Richmond in July, and I went with them to receive a resolution that was commending their win. They also just had their ring ceremony at their last football game, so congratulations to the Boys Soccer Team. I've had a chance to go to Colgan, Hilton, and OP's back-to-school nights and met lots of teachers and parents who were very excited to talk about the school year and how things are going, and how grateful they are that the kids are back and ready to go. In Saunders, Benton, and Parkside, I got to meet many more teachers, and I just want to say, Parkside still has teachers who are also driving a bus. I'm not suggesting this is a solution. There might be somebody who wants to do it, but we've already heard multiple times tonight that we have a lack of bus drivers. So it is a definitely a job that we have positions for. I encourage people to apply. We also need substitutes, and we also need teachers. So anyone who has any passion for this kind of work, please, please, consider Prince William County as your opportunity. That said, I also have been able to get into the elementary schools that are finally having their back-to-school nights. I went and saw, what was it? Oh, yeah, it's just two so far. McAuliffe, they had a book fair, and if you have a book fair, I will come and I will buy books, because I love books, and I went to Coles last night, and I look forward to going to the rest of them in the next couple of weeks. I went to see marching band competitions at Woodbridge with Ms. Wall, and I went to see the marching band competition, part of it at Colgan, and Dr. Latif was there. And what was really cool is there was a marching band that has some of my former students in it, so that was a real thrill to be able to see them grow into these positions and see where their education is carrying them. I met with so many different teachers and parents, and I know everybody is still, we're still in the pandemic, and I would expect that things will still change, although not maybe at the pace that we saw last year. Remember last year, we used to get a little bit of guidance, and something would change, and everyone would be, "But how do we do this? Wait, is it three feet? Is it six feet? What's okay now?" So I expect there will be a change in guidance in terms of vaccinations, distancing, things about the masks. As a teacher, I do get tired of wearing my mask all day long, so I do appreciate the folks who come here advocating for some flexibility in it. I do understand. This, it's hard to hear. This, it's hard to hear, it's hard to speak. I get it. And then you've also expressed other concerns, but I just wanted to let people know that I can relate on some level there, too. Went to Gainesville for the ribbon-cutting ceremony, and Patriot had their 10-year ceremony. I said I wasn't going to use all this time, so I'm going to finish up here in just a second. I watched at the elementary schools that parents were signing up for Parents as Partners. That is something that did not exist when my children were young, and I wish it had. It looks like a great program. And last thing I have to say, because Dr. Latif would be upset if I didn't, while we're in the school buildings, wear your mask, wash your hands, keep whatever distance we're supposed to be keeping, because that guidance seems to be changing. If you choose to, please get vaccinated and stay well. Thank you.
Fantastic, Ms. Zagapor. That will continue to help drive our rates down. Welcome to the new academic school year. The number-one thing I think all of us have heard and seen, or people are just thrilled, and our students are thrilled to be back, and I think that is a resounding feeling from the east to the west, from the south to the north, from middle school to high school to elementary. As I think about the job I have to do and the Board has to do, I think about them in four buckets. I've always done so. There's a lot of noise out there in the general national debate about schools, school opening, reopening. We struggled through that last year, as Ms. Wall pointed out, that last year, one year ago, was certainly a different day and a different time. But the buckets I like to think about things in is student success. The number-one, two, three thing I wake up every morning, and I know Dr. McDade does as well, is our plan to get our students to recover, to reengage, and to accelerate. That is our mantra for this year. That is the work our teachers, our division leaders, our principals are working on. I can't tell you how important, and how many parents who've come to me and talked to me about the recovery part of it. The recovery part of it, sounds like a fascinating word, but it is the behind, the what we didn't get last year and the year before. The last normal year, 11th grader had would have been in eighth grade. The ninth-grade quarter, last quarter of school, didn't finish the way, you know, there was no new material. 10th grade, you know, was a struggle last year for some of our 11th graders. Now our 11th graders are going into their most important year, worried about their grades, worried about college admissions next year. And as they think through these things, they are, as many of our board members talked about, stressed out, they're concerned, and there is a lot of catching up to do, especially some of their courses, especially like math. And so I hear from parents quite regularly on that concern and students on that concern. More than I hear about on all the other things we're hearing about in the national stage or even on the local stage, that is what I hear about. I hear directly from parents and students. So our work continues, and that is going to be the biggest part of our effort this year, is that recovery, that reengagement, and that acceleration. That is student success. Safety and security, I've talked about many times. The safety, our mitigation efforts, the work we're doing to keep school open, keep school going, keep school safe, our staff safe, has been nothing short of incredible, as Ms. Jessie points out. We have done a terrific job last year. We're doing a terrific job this year. I have continued to be very impressed with Dr. McDade's leadership, our quarantine numbers. We continue to do really strong work. So we'll continue that. Regarding safety and security, I have, you know, continued safety, and it is, you know, the efforts that Dr. McDade announced that we voted on earlier on making sure that we have better ventilation in our, some of our trailers, and that that work is being done. When we talk about space and infrastructure, you've heard we opened two new schools this year, Gainesville High School and Potomac Shores Middle School. We've had some terrific openings, great principals, wonderful facilities, and those students are embracing that, and the families are embracing that fully, and we're very excited about that effort and continue to support them. I want to congratulate, you know, since we're talking about space and infrastructure, Patriot High School celebrated their 10th year anniversary opening. Dr. Bishop and his staff put on a terrific 10-year celebration, invited many of the board members we attended. It was a spectacular event, held with a festival for the students near the beginning, September 10th, and it was just a fantastic weekend for everybody involved, and I want to thank Patriot High School and Dr. Bishop for being so kind to have us out there and celebrate with them. You know, we talk about salaries. That's the other thing I spend a lot of time working on, and you heard from Dr. McDade, some efforts on making sure we're hearing from our staff on concerns. We continue to address. We have a strong record over four years of working with our staff on making sure we're trying to do the very best we can with the budgets we have. This Board, I know, is committed to continuing to do that as we move forward. The other things besides student success that I, in all of those buckets, is the bus driver shortages, we think about every day, the staff shortages, we think about every day, and the continued safety, we think about every day. Those are the things that this Board, you know, when you try to differentiate the signal and the noise that are out there, those are the signals we are heavily working on and what Dr. McDade is working on, and I continue to thank our staff for spending the time working on the non-sexy aspects of making sure this division continues. I think it's important to congratulate our finance team and the finance team for the county. This is where I get into the boring details. They put out and sold some bonds last week, $60 million worth of bonds at 1.68%, which is the lowest interest rate we've ever had. That will make sure that we have continued savings as we move through capital improvement projects. They're putting out more refinancing debt at the current low interest rates. If we do that, Mr. Wallingford and Dr. McDade will bring the school board savings that we can all enjoy. So I want to congratulate that team, and especially our county staff who go out to New York to do all of that work, and Chris Martino and the entire team out there. We really appreciate everything they do for the schools. I think it's important to talk about quarantine. I have, you know, I have, it's not a secret, I have concerns about, you know, quarantining and policies for quarantining from the state level. I think our school division is doing an excellent job making sure we're doing it in the right way. I have voiced my concerns to the Governor and the Secretary of Education on ideas to help reduce quarantining. I think there's some states and some areas doing test-to-state policies. I think the state ought to look at that. And so, and that's another thing I hear about from folks. As Ms. Zagapor said, there's a job fair this weekend, October 9th. Please come, tell your friends all about it. We are looking for everything. So, you know, there's college fairs coming up. They're on the college, the calendar, I think, one at Colgan High School and one at Woodbridge High School. Is that correct? Coming up in the next few weeks for our seniors and juniors and sophomores and freshmen, please go to those college fairs. And I'm going to make one comment, I'll take an extra minute, on Ms. Jen Wall's comment from Charles Dickens on counting your blessings when they are there. And I think in these times, such polarized political times, I don't think it's a secret that Ms. Wall and I share different political shades, come from different political spectrums, but I can tell you, we share almost the exact same values. And she has a 9th grader and 11th grader and someone who just graduated last year. I have a 9th grader, 11th grader, and someone who just graduated. We share similarities. We talk regularly about our concerns for our students, not just our own, but their friends and all the ones in the county about the issues. When we work together, even though we come from different sides, we do it as civilized in a fashion as I have ever been able to find. I count that blessing, the opportunity to work with someone as smart, as sharp, as committed to taking care of everything for our students in this county. And so as she talked about Charles Dickens tonight, I think it should point out that I am, and I think this Board and this school division is lucky to have Jennifer Wall on the school Board. So I appreciate that. With that being said, have a wonderful evening, everyone. This school board meeting is adjourned.